He's a steamroller, rolling through the land. He's a steamroller, he's rolling through the land, through the land. Woe unto the man who in front of him just stands. He's a steamroller, rolling through the land. Yes, he's a steamroller, he's rolling through your land, through your land. And woe unto your man, if in front of him just stands. He's a steam, 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 steamroller, he's rolling through the land. He's a steamroller, he's rolling through the land, through your land. Woe unto the man who in front of him just stands. He's a steam, 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 steamroller. He's a steam, 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 steamroller. He's rolling, rolling, rolling through the land. He's a steamroller, he's rolling through my land, through my land. And woe unto the man who in front of him just stands. Rolling, 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 rolling. Yes, he's rolling, 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 rolling. Yes, he's rolling, 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 rolling. Better get to moving, 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 moving. He's a steamroller, he's rolling through the land, through the land. And woe unto the man who in front of him just stands. Yes, he's rolling, rolling. Don't stand still, you better get to moving. He's rolling, rolling, rolling through the land. He's a steamroller, he's rolling through the land, through the land. And woe unto the man who in front of him just stands. Oh, Lord, but she gets to laughing, she gets me to laughing. But isn't that the truth, though?
Yes.
He's a roller, he's a steamroller. And a lot of people think, you know, they can just stand in front of God and he's not going to roll them over. But the fact is, is that he's rolling through our land and everything there that hasn't been moved into the way of the Lord, it's getting run over.
Amen.
That was the whole thing that, I had no idea that Elvis wrote a song called Steamroller. And all these young kids came up that night at the church, I sang that, they all said, "That was just like Elvis, Elvis sang that song too." And I said, "I don't think Elvis sang that song." Oh, my hallelujah, we welcome everybody, we got started a little early. But, you know, why not break things up a little bit? We're not traditional. We start out singing anymore, instead of even greeting anybody. We just like to get into the praise and the worship and let the Lord do a great thing in our midst. Good to see Zach here this morning and everybody else that has come out. I think most of all of you have been, was out last night. And thank God for that great word that was ministered last night.
Amen.
And the way that the Lord just ministered to all of us, even in personal words, we thank the Lord for it. Because we need to hear from God. And sometimes you need confirmation. You know, it's one thing to have God speak to you something, and that's one thing, but to have somebody else speak unto you and it confirms what the Lord has already spoken to you, then that's even more so that way. So, we thank the Lord for the ministry and for the gifts operating. We're not a people that look unto gifts, if you know what I mean by that. In the second day, in the Pentecost, movement of Pentecost, they followed the signs and wonders, instead of the signs and wonders following them. They got wrapped up into all of the prayer lines and all of the miracle, Friday night miracle night, all of that, that caused people to come out. But the trouble was, no one was really knowing the Lord any greater. It was all wrapped up in a man or a woman that had these gifts. And tent revivals of A.A. Allen, of Leroy Jenkins, Oral Roberts, and go on down the line and mention all these that had these ministries. And today would be like Benny Hinn or some of these Rod, what's his name?
Parsons.
Parsons, Parsley, not Parsons, Parsley. I can't stand Parsley, so that's probably why I try to stay away from that name. But anyway, they have their ministries, but people follow that. And this word of the kingdom, there's nothing here that your flesh would really desire.
Amen.
It's not a ministry to the flesh.
Amen.
In fact, the focus on the kingdom message is the inner man.
Amen.
The outward man is perishing day by day, but the inner man is being renewed. And that's where this word is going to, is on the inside of us. And really and truthfully, this body will be the last thing to be changed. But it will be changed, praise the Lord. But this is, first of all, doing an inner work in us. Eyes can't see it, ears can't hear it, you can't pick up on it by the five senses. I am sure that I wouldn't be wrong if I said that there is so much more that has gone on and has happened to you than you're even aware of. Because it's all been inside.
That's right.
And that's where God is building His kingdom at, is in the hearts of men and women. So, a lot of times, we don't think God's doing anything, whereas He has done more than we could ever imagine already in us. But, you know, it starts with a new mind, a new heart, a new nature. All of that is inside. And again, the new body is really just the result of the inner work. So, all we need to do is do whatever you need to do to stay alive until the change comes. Don't be so body mindful. Don't be so mindful about the money in the bank, kind of a house you live in, how popular you are. All of those things are secondary. The thing that we have to stay focused on is our heart changing. Are we showing more love and compassion and Christ-like nature?
Yes.
Is God changing the way that we see things or the way that we react to things? And those are the signs, really, that prove that God is at work inside of people, praise the Lord. It's not how much we jump and dance and holler and all of that, it's what happens in our everyday lives. Is God really doing something in us that we can say, "You know, last year I would have done that a whole lot different than I am now. God has really changed me in that way." So, that's what I look at anyway, for God to do these things in us, praise the Lord. Let's sing "What a Wonder," because He is a wonder. That's number 135, page 34. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. You've exceeded our expectations by far. Salvation for all men and not for just a few. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. Come on, sing that again. Hallelujah. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. You've exceeded our expectations by far. Salvation for all men and not for just a few. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. I see you standing on a tree that's so tall. Your accusers are cursing you, were told. You looked them all over and cried, "Forgive them, Father." What a wonder, what a wonder you are. Now, on the third day, you've risen from the tomb. Oh, your disciples, they come looking, but you're not there. Oh, you've been preaching, oh, yes, Lord, to lost souls, the gospel of the good news. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. Come on, sing it unto Him. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. You've exceeded our expectations. Yes, you have. Salvation for all men and not for just a few. Glory. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. What a wonder, what a wonder, Jesus, you are. You've exceeded our expectations by far. Salvation for all men and not for just a few. What a wonder, what a wonder you are. Hallelujah, hallelujah, Lord. You amaze us, oh mighty God, you amaze us, Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah. We wonder at you, oh Lord, a Rabosiah, full of wonder and truth. Oh mighty God, mighty God, mighty God. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before Him, heaven and earth adore Him. What a mighty God we serve. Oh, yes, what a mighty God we serve. Oh, what a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before Him, heaven and earth adore Him. What a mighty God we serve. Oh, yes, what a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before Him, heaven and earth adore Him. What a mighty God we serve. Sing it. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before Him, heaven and earth adore Him. What a mighty God we serve. Oh, he's mighty. Tell them, my darling. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before Him, heaven and earth adore Him. What a mighty God we serve. Hallelujah. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before Him, heaven and earth adore Him. What a mighty God we serve. Amen, Lord, amen, Lord. Mighty, mighty is our God. All able to pull down strongholds. Glory to God, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb to be praised and honored. You know, there's some circumstances right now that need to hear how great God is. There's some things that people are facing today that that needs to be the proclamation. Great is our God and greatly to be praised.
Yes, hallelujah.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. He is a mighty fortress. He is a mighty sword and shield and buckler, hallelujah. He is a rescuer, a savior for his people, a deliverer from out of all prison houses, glory to God. He is the Lord of lords and the King of kings over every sickness and affliction and disease, hallelujah. Our God reigns in it all, hallelujah. Come on and join me today. Let's tell it how great God is, hallelujah. Amen and amen. Well, we've heard how great this virus is, we've heard how it just keeps coming back and affecting more and more people. Well, it's time for us to let the virus know our God is greater than that. Hallelujah, amen. It's time for us to know that the Lord has got it all under control and He's going to take it off of the face of the earth whenever His time is right, hallelujah. He's going to exterminate it, glory to God. So, don't think like as though something's out of control in this earth. God's in control of it all, hallelujah. Praise the Lord, but I just feel those out here that are viewing this, listening to this, you need to know that. I know when you're weak and when you're weary, that there's times that you don't have the strength to really speak out and to take a stand for yourself. So, that's what we're doing for you, hallelujah. We are standing in the gap for you, hallelujah. Amen. And we're strong enough in the Lord to speak a word into you and to tell you that you will live and not die, hallelujah. You will raise up out of your sick bed and you will walk again, hallelujah. Amen and amen. The Lord is mighty, hallelujah, in the midst of you, glory to God. And He will deliver you out of all your situations. So, let's keep entering into the Spirit of the Lord this morning. Hallelujah, release your spirit this morning. Release yourself in God. Don't be an observer, don't be someone in the stands looking at what's going on in the field below you, hallelujah. Get in the game, get down into the midst of what God's doing, hallelujah. Because we're all here for that very purpose, to lift up the Lord Jesus Christ until every knee is bowed and every tongue is confessed, His lordship and His kingship, hallelujah, until everything in heaven and in earth and below the earth declares that declaration, hallelujah. So, we are those that are standing, hallelujah, in the Lord until this indignation is passed before us. God has called us to stand in the heavens, take a stand for those things that are right and true and lively, hallelujah, to wage war against the darkness and the sadness and the tears and the sorrow, hallelujah, those who are dwelling in the valley of the shadow of death. Light is springing up in the midst of you. We are shining the light of the Lord into your house today, hallelujah. And your darkness cannot stay in the midst of the light that is the light of all lights, hallelujah. Jesus, hallelujah. So, know that today, hallelujah. That's what we're gathered here in Dixon, Tennessee for. And that's why people out there are gathered together in the heavens with us, because we are going to see changes wrought in every level of our existence. Every level of our existence, we are going to see God raise His banner of love over that, hallelujah. Glory to God. He's pulling down the kingdoms of men and making them the kingdoms of our God, hallelujah. Amen, there's a, there is a change of order at hand, isn't it? Woo, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Lord. I give myself to you, oh mighty God. Make me a sharp two-edged sword that I might cut asunder the bands of wickedness and set your people free, oh Lord. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus. Well, now who can hold me back? Who can keep me from appearing? No man, no man, no man. Tell me who can hold me back? Who can keep me from appearing? No man, no man, no man. Well, who can hold him back? Who can keep him from appearing? No man, no man, no man. Hey, who can hold me back? Who can keep me from appearing? No man, no man, no man. Well, who can hold him back? Who can keep him from appearing? No man, no man, no man. Hear me, who can hold him back? Who can keep him from appearing? No man, no man, no man, not your man. Who can hold him back? Who can keep him from appearing? No man, no man, no man. Well, who can hold him back? Who can keep him from appearing? No man, no man, no man. I'm telling you, who can hold him back? Who can keep him from appearing? No man, no man, no man, not your man. Who can hold him back? Who can keep him from appearing? No man, no man, no man. I said, no man, no man, no man. I said, no man, no man, no man. I said, no man, no man, no man. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Glory.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. You know, when there's a wall in God, you have to keep hitting it. It may not crumble after the first blow. But you just have to keep hitting it and hitting it and hitting it. And pretty soon it starts cracking. That's the soul cracking. That's the soul starting to turn to the Lord, hallelujah. The soul's fickle. It'll be with the Lord one moment and be against the Lord the next. It'll be in the spirit one minute and joined to the spirit. Oh my, it's wonderful. And the next thing you come together, that soul has got his eyes all the other places rather than in the Lord. But I feel like we're starting to hit a wall here. And we're just gonna keep hitting it till it comes down, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Because there can't remain in the midst of God's people any resistance to what God wants to do, hallelujah. Until all minds are in one accord and in the unity of the faith, we're gonna keep hitting that wall until it crumbles, praise the Lord. It may happen through worship. It may happen through the word. It may happen through a silence. You never know. But we aren't gonna let anyone remain behind a wall fearful of what God may do. Because we want you to be free in the Lord. We want you to be at liberty in God, hallelujah, amen. He wants you to be born free in him so that you can do whatever God wants you to do. And many times you let your own, what's the word for it? Inferiority complex keep you from seeing that other man in you. Now, no matter what you are in the natural, you're not that in the spirit. You're something greater than that, hallelujah. There's a voice of the resurrection in each and every one of you. It's not just up here with microphones. It's the voice of the resurrection is in each and every one of us. And if all of us start allowing that voice of the resurrection to start to emanate out of us, I'm telling you, the dead themselves will be raised, hallelujah. Do you believe that today? I believe that there's a corporate man in our midst from both sides of the river that are being joined together today because there is great things that God wants to do, hallelujah. Bless his holy name. Hallelujah. I just wanna wait on the Lord. Let him lead us, glory to his holy name. Where's that song, "I Saw His Face"? "I Live No More." Oh, glory to God. Hallelujah. Sartre wrote that many years ago. See, you can't see God and live. So, once you see his face, you live no more. Hallelujah, you have lost your life and you have gained his, hallelujah. And that's what this song's all about. Coming to the end of ourselves because we saw his face, hallelujah. Paulette, would you get my glasses on the little table there next to the couch? It's right up against that post. I'm gonna have to start making up words here in a minute. I didn't get my glasses on.
Works for me.
"I Saw His Face." "I Live No More." "His life came forth." "My life to restore." "Because of his grace." "I found my place." "Then I saw his face." "I saw his face." "Man cannot see." "His face and limb." "Life you must lose." "That his you may give." "Oh marvelous grace." "Each man in his place." "When they see his face." "When they see his face." "Nations shall come." "To him they shall bow." "Through his gates of praise." "Salvation is now." "His chosen seed." "Is what the world needs." "They will see his face." "They will see his face." "I saw his face." "I live no more." "His life came forth." "My life to restore." "Because of his grace." "I found my place." "Then I saw his face." "Then I saw his face." "Man cannot see." "His face and limb." "Your life you must lose." "That his you may give." "Oh marvelous grace." "Each man in his place." "When they see his face." "When they see his face." Play it, Gary. "Nations shall come." "To him they shall bow." "Through his gates of praise." "Salvation is now." "We're chosen seed." "We're what the world needs." "They will see his face." "They will see his face." Prepare yourself, gird yourself up. For I, the Lord thy God, have plans for you. And you will not be living the life you're living now as I move you forward into my plan. Kill off all of the resistance that is within your heart. Let not your own desires and needs govern you anymore. Free yourself in me and I will raise you up in my sight. A mighty people, strong and able to do all that I have purpose for you to do. I will be the provider for all your needs. I will send you forth with a word, a word of fire, a word of purification and refinement. And I will cause you to be a flame moving through the earth. I will cause you to burn up the old waste places, to pull down all of the old strongholds. I am setting in your midst an order that is a warrior order. It is governmental and it is a battle order. Array yourselves. Put on your priestly garments. Put on your priestly robes and put on your kingly crowns. For you will go forth and you will do battle against all that is hindering my people. You are the one that I have chosen from the foundations of the world. I saw you every step of your way. I knew you when you were sniveling and cowering and not able to do anything for yourself. And I still chose you, says the Lord. Because it's not by might and it's not by power, but by my spirit, says the Lord. I will prove myself to you quickly. You will see that I mean business, that I am not joking, neither am I just saying words to you. I will show you quickly how serious I am concerning my plan that I have and your position and your place within it. For I will secure you and I will take out of you all your shyness and out of you all of your bashfulness. And I will cause you to be bold in the day of the Lord. I will cause you to know what it is to stand when all else has fallen, that you will still stand. Because I am in you and I am in you of a truth, says the Lord, to do all my will and desire through you. I will enable you, says the Lord. I will give you authority and power. And whatsoever I say through you will happen and it will happen immediately. Know that I am preparing you for things that you have never heard of before, that you have never even comprehended in your mind or thought about or even imagined, says the Lord. What I am getting ready to do for creation is beyond the imagination of man. I will give you faith, says the Lord, my faith. My faith is what you will walk in. You will not fail and you will not fall by the side. But your sword will be mighty and the enemy will fall back, says the Lord, because of the mighty unity and harmony that I have placed in the midst of this people. All for one and one for all is your motto. Go forth and conquer and pull down and bring to me my kingdom. Establish it in the earth. Do you think I have called you just to be a man and just a woman all the days of your life? I am now ready to separate you from all of that, from that old life. And I am getting ready to launch you like a ship into the sea. You are leaving the banks of your prior existence and you are going to a place where you would not go in yourself. But I will bring you there. Yea, I will drag you there and I will establish you there. But I will not wait for you to amend what I'm doing. I'm going to do it with you, with your amen or without it, says the Lord. You're going one way or the other. Get ready, I'm serious and I am sober concerning what I am about to do. The next step is at hand. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. 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 Hallelujah, Lord. Oh God, hallelujah. Oh God. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Give us a vision, Lord. Give us eyes to see, ears to hear, Lord. Hallelujah. Oh God. Oh Lord God almighty, hallelujah. Give us your sight, Lord, hallelujah. Hallelujah. I'm hearing the I Am speaking today. And there's no other voice like the I Am. Page sixteen. Have you ever heard the voice of the Lord change from one, what do you call that? Sound? And all of a sudden it changes into another sound. You can hear it in the meetings. As God starts to build these services and these services start to take a shape to them. And for every service, what God wants to accomplish in that service, you can actually hear the sounds start to change. And I heard a seriousness start to come into this place today, hallelujah. So that there's a great dealing of the Lord taking place. And it's that voice of the I Am that spoke to Moses, hallelujah. And he told him, tell Pharaoh, the I Am is who I am. I'm the I Am. Who took your mourning and sorrow away? Who took your life and restored it, I say? Who took away the part and revealed in you his soul? Oh, the I Am, the I Am, the I Am. Who healed your land and brought forth the first fruit? Who robbed your earth and made you need for his use? Who leads your every step? Makes his word now stand tall? The I Am, the I Am, the I Am. And who shall we say is appearing today? Who shall they see in the midst of the beast? Who'll take away the veil? Let creation go free? Oh, the I Am, the I Am, the I Am. Come on, sing it. Who took your mourning and your sorrow away? Who took your life and restored it, I say? Who took away the part and revealed in you? Who took away the part and revealed in you his soul? The I Am, he's the I Am, the I Am. Come on, praise Him today, hallelujah. Who healed all your land and brought forth the first fruit? Who robbed your earth and made you need for his use? Who leads your every step? Makes his word now stand tall? The I Am, the I Am, the great I Am. And who shall we say is appearing today? Who shall they see in the midst of me? Who'll take away the veil? Let creation go free? The I Am, the I Am, the I Am. Oh, the I Am, the I Am, the I Am. He's the I Am, he's the I Am. The great I Am is here. Oh, the one that has always been and will always be. Hallelujah, hallelujah. I want to tell you something. I have been uh, walking this word for a lot, a lot of years. And I have been through a lot of different changes in my life and in my ministry. That's why I can say this so boldly to you. God will see you through everything. Nothing will cause you to fall or to fail. God has us. And He will not let us go, hallelujah. Don't let yourself get entranced by things you see and hear. Well, the five sense realm. Don't, don't get stuck in that place where if you don't see it, it can't happen. This is a supernatural day. Supernatural day. It is a day of miraculous things. And this is where we need to live at, is in the miraculous. Hallelujah. That's where God's bringing us to. Is where we have such an expectation in God. That nothing that God speaks to us will seem foolish or unreasonable. Or that we would even laugh at it and say, how could that ever be, oh Lord? There is something being done in the midst of us right now that it is going to cause us to just say only two things, yea and amen. To everything that God says to our heart, hallelujah. So if God says to leave and God says, I'll take care of you. And you're to go here or you're to go there, don't worry about that in the natural. And say, how's this gonna happen? How's that gonna happen? How am I gonna do this? How am I going to do that? That's the natural man, hallelujah. Let your inner man be the one at the forefront. And let, let that inner man in you have expectations of God moving for you in ways that you have never seen before in your life. Hallelujah. Now uh, ministry wise, that is the key to it all, being a minister. Some of you don't know what a full-time ministry is yet. But uh, you're going to know as you go along in God. Because uh, there are those that count themselves as ministers, but they don't know the first thing about being a full-time, 24-hour-a-day minister. Uh, they're Sunday ministers. They're Wednesday night ministers. They're ministers who are, who are guaranteed an income from a church that pays them a salary. And that's not the, the lifestyle of the Melchizedek priesthood order. Is to be hirelings that are held under the yoke of people that control the money in the church. And that sit on boards. And they criticize and they critique everything that the minister is doing or saying. That is not Melchizedek. Melchizedek is a lot like the old time, Old Testament prophets. Where you don't know what he's gonna do next. You don't know if you should bless him or run from him when he comes to you, hallelujah. You don't know what he's gonna say to you next. You have no idea if he's for you or against you. And, and that's why they sent runners out from the walls. When the watchman would see a prophet of the Lord coming and finally recognize it is a prophet of the Lord. They would send runners out from the king and say, I've been sent to ask you, are you for the city or are you against the city? And if he's against the city, it gave them time for that runner to run back and try to hide or try to convince God not to do what he's planning on doing. But that is this Melchizedek order, folks. We're not here to pat backs. We're not here to make everybody feel better about yourselves. We have a job to do. Can you say amen? We're on a mission for God, hallelujah. And, and the sword is gonna fall and, and it's not personal, it's business. It's, it's not us getting our own feelings in the way. We're not, uh, if it was up to me, everybody would be smiling the whole time. I, 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 I really want everybody to have a good time in the Lord. But there's, there's a business in me at hand. And it's in every one of you that minister in these meetings. Don't, don't think about your, how you want everybody to be. Speak the word. Hallelujah. Doesn't matter what it says to us as long as it's God. Don't get your own heart into it. Don't try to set somebody straight simply because you heard them say this or that and now you're gonna use the pulpit to set them straight. Speak the word of the Lord, hallelujah. And it will get the job done, glory to God. And, and, and God will slay and raised back up in the same breath. Woo, hallelujah. I said, he will slay you and he will breathe into you life at the same moment. Hallelujah. And you will live again, hallelujah. That's what the word of the Lord is doing in our midst. So that is doing a quick work. But we have given flesh way too much room. To maneuver and to have its way. Can you say amen? Do you like what you're hearing? Then I've got to start preaching it harder, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. I'm shaking in my boots right now concerning what God is saying to us. Because he is giving no sway to anything, glory to God. I'm telling you, the time is very short right now. And God's done, start doing a quick work. I'm gonna say a quicker work. So uh, the, all bets are off. According to what God's gonna do next. I can't tell you uh, from one moment to the next. And I'm not here to apologize for God when he treats you rough. Because he knows what it's gonna take with us, hallelujah. He knows that, that if we played games with him for forty years, he knows that he's gonna have to change the, the action, hallelujah. And he's gonna have to start giving us ultimatums. Hallelujah. That's how serious it is this morning. That's how serious this realm is right now. Is that it has to have our, our entire attention. And for us to be alert today. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, glory to God. You know Dennis, God is gonna start taking out, it's not fear exactly. It's, I don't know what it is in you that God's gonna start dealing with you on, but you're gonna have the peace of God come upon you. Total peace. Hallelujah. And he is gonna make you instant in him. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. Because you would not go where God's taken you in the natural. And I know you know that. But your inner man, I can hear him saying this in my spirit. Go, 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 go. Hallelujah. And he's ready. Hallelujah. But, but I'm telling you, God's gonna give you a peace about all of your situation. And I know you have a lot at stake. But I'm telling you, it's not worth it to have one moment of unrest over what God's gonna start doing. Hallelujah. God wants your mind to be in him at all times. Right now, I see that you're being pulled apart. One direction after another direction after another direction in your natural life. In your natural life, you have so many things going on at the same time. And it's like you're a juggler, juggling all of that in the air. And God's speaking to you and you're saying, but Lord, look at this. Look at this, Lord. How in the world am I gonna leave all this? How am I going to do something else than what I'm doing right now? Look at all these things up in the air here. And God's saying, leave it. I'll take care of it. I'll be the provider for it. And I'll lead you every step of the way, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen. Hallelujah. That word could be given to every one of us. Glory to God. Almost started singing. It's now or never. My wife could probably sing that, she knows every song that's ever been written. That's how real this is this morning, I ain't kidding. My spirit was singing that. It's now or never. What's the next line to that? My love won't wait. I love it. Hallelujah. Oh my, 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 my. I've noticed. Sammy, come in, uh, share with what the Lord wants you to say. Sammy Eagle from Marble City, I, I think, Marble City. Oklahoma. Glory to his holy name. Hallelujah, Jesus. Hallelujah. Here baby, you got it?
I've got my wife's pretty purple Bible here.
Looking good.
Style point.
Styling.
I need to use this.
Bless the Lord.
Amen, brother.
Man, I tell y'all what.
Hallelujah.
Hey, realness. That's just the realness, this is realness. You know, and it's hard to find realness out there anymore. I blessed the sister, Carol, my long-lost cousin, her, we got her last name. Same last name. She was just telling me a while ago, she said, you know, I'm alone where I'm at. And she said, uh, and I heard somebody speak at another meeting or one of the meetings, she said. And I heard that come from other people say that I'm alone where I'm at. You don't have no fellowship. And she looked at me and she said, she said, I, I wanted to say to them, you're not alone, I'm with you. You know, and, and that's, that's true, the true assembling of the saints and you know, we're, we're gathered together in, in the heavens in a spiritual realm that just because we can't see it or feel it, it's not that it's not real. How many of y'all agree with me this morning that existence doesn't require a physical appearance? If you can hear what I'm saying? We're gathered together in a heavenly place even though we may not be physically together. There's a, there's a, there's a corporate body being put together. That just because they're not sitting in the same room here, doesn't mean you're not gathered together in the spirit. How many of y'all agree with me this morning that if we can't see things in the natural, they ain't real to us? Huh? You know what I mean? That's what a lot of people deals with. If it's not real and then, you know, we, we have trouble grabbing a hold of it. We, we, we talk about, you know Bob opened the door here when he said, let's just be serious about things. And that's what I want to do this morning. And whenever is just be serious about things. I don't want to be churchy or sound like a, a planned message here. I, I want to roll from my spirit and just speak to you out of realness. And I believe there's a people that's crying out for a realness. There's a work being done within a people's spirit right now, but it's hard for them to find the realness. They'll go to church after church after church and bounce around and bounce around and they'll stick with it for a little while. But eventually the time will come where the old routine of things as you were saying, just gets old. And you get tired of doing that and there's no life there. You, it, it's feeding your flesh. And it feels good for a while, but eventually it fades out. Cause it can only sustain for so long. But when the reality and a realness really begins to take a work in you, you can't get away from it. And it's not because it's, it's because it's real and it's, it's, nothing on the outside really, your showmanship don't make a difference because the work's being done within you. So it takes the showmanship and the production and all of that out of the way. The patting on the backs, the, the good job, you spoke a great word today, all of that don't matter. Because you know what's going on inside of you. That's realness. And I believe there's a people that's on Facebook and watches these videos that's, that's looking for a realness, man. There, there's, there's people out there that's in a dark place right now. That may be strung out on drugs and alcohol, that maybe, y, 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 you got such a wide perimeter of people that may be strung out on drugs right now. That uh, then you got Christian folks here also. That's looking for the same thing. You know what I mean? So I'm, I, whenever I'm gonna speak here to you, I'm speaking to all of y'all. I'm speaking to the drug addict sitting at home right now looking for realness and the Christian at home right now looking for realness. You know? And there's people that's like that, that's really looking and that's why, you know, I, I, I remember, I can only speak to you from my experiences. The reality that I have. Not what I've heard other people say or the way that things have been put, but, but from my experiences and realities in God, that what he's done within me. That's all I can give you is what I have within me. I can't give you nothing else or, or it's foreign. You know, it's from somebody else, it's borrowed, it's, it's not a reality that I, I can give you. So I remember, you know, whenever, looking back and I'm talking five or six years ago, I began to watch these videos and be acquainted with Dennis and Clifton and, and Bob. And I read Bob's teachings and all the other, you know, things. And I got to know Gary and all these seasoned preachers. If you can hear what I'm saying real quick, bear with me. Bob told me one time, we was in Tennessee, he said, he said, don't, don't let all them white hairs out there scare you from speaking the truth. he said, "Don't let all them white hairs out there scare you from speaking the truth." And I knew what, he wasn't being mean. He was saying, "Don't let all them old people that's been in church their whole life hold you back from trying to conform to what they wanna hear from you." You, you, you speak what you wanna speak, not what they wanna hear. As long as it's from God. And that, you know, it's, it's hard for a young, zealous man to keep his emotions out of the way. But I believe I'm different this year than I was last year, Gary. Because there's been a continuous progression in who God is in me. And it's part of a maturing process. And unless you've really been begotten of God, you don't understand the mature process and yet. You understand all the protocols that Christianity has to offer you of, just 'cause you've sat in a per- church pew for forty years, doesn't mean God's matured you up yet. To be truly begotten of God is a whole different ballgame. And it begins to work within you. But I remember sitting at home, listening to these seasoned preachers all the time, and it sounded the same from a different sound wave. But I heard Zach get up and speak one day. And I heard what he was saying. And the sound that came out of him was different than I heard from the original seasoned preachers. And I want y'all to understand that there's a different generation that's rising up. That's coming up behind these men, that they're, they've laid a great foundation. And they've brought us to a point, to where now there's a different generation coming forth that God is progressing them on through, that's taking them to another place. So, it's, it's okay to hear what these younger guys have to say, just because they don't have titles, just because they don't have, uh, uh, certificates that they've been ordained by God, or, uh, church or denomination. You see what I'm saying? I, I remember one time we was in McAllister, me and Gary, and they got us, got Gary ministered, they got me up there to preach, and I said, and they just spoke to me, "What am I doing? What gives me the right to stand here to, to minister, to preach, and what gives me the right anywhere else to do it? I'm nobody. I'm a seventeen-year drug addict that's only been clean for six or seven years now. What gives me the right to stand up here and preach the Word of God to people that's been in church their whole life that knows so much more about the Bible than I do, that can quote scriptures, and, and also, the ones that God's elevated to a higher place? And you know, what gives you the right? Nothing gives you the right, so it can't be anything that I've done, and it can't be me. I know within myself that it can only be God. And His plan, and a predestined plan that was in place before I even existed in this physical body. And I wanna tell y'all tonight, there's people out here, that are here in this room watching on Facebook, I don't care if you're strung out on drugs, I don't care if you're an alcoholic, or whatever you may be, God has a purpose in your life. A predestined purpose, and just because you may not be called into it yet, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Because existence doesn't require physical manifestation. God spoke things into existence that hasn't manifested yet. And it has to manifest because God spoke it. So creation has to comply with the Word of the Lord. It has to.
Good word.
We have to be strengthened in this day and time. You know, we, we, we ta- we talk a big game. Church folks talks a big game, "Well, I trust in the Lord and this, that," let them get slapped in the mouth, knocked down. They, they change. Then all of a sudden, "Well, I don't know." Let their kids get strung out on drugs. Things change. Let them lose a family member, why'd that happen, God? Well, last week you said, "I trust God in all and all." We don't understand the plan. We can't understand the plan. Like you said a while ago, if we ever think we've got it figured out, we've done, put a cap on Him. We think we get these big revelations, and we start understanding who He is, and we say, "Oh, we've got it." You put Him in a box. But I so, I so appreciate to be able to be gathered here, but what I was getting at is, and Zach came back and made me think about it again, I heard a sound come forth from Him. And it ministered to me. Because I, 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 I seen realness in who He was, and I'm not saying that there's no realness in other people, but understand, there's a dying creation out there that is looking for realness. And if they can say, this guy, there's something different. And what God's raising up in the people is something different. They're gonna know that Jamie's been on the, where she's been for twenty-five years, and they're gonna know that she's not here to play church. You know, they're not, they know she's not just going through the motions of the old church system. 'Cause it's just different. And I thank God it's different. And I thank God to be able to be associated with y'all people. Because Rachel said last night, she said, "You know, I enjoy being here because, you know, you can just be yourself." I spoke at a church a while back, and I hope nobody's watching that knows what I'm talking about. I spoke at a church a while back, and I was sitting there, and this room began to fill up with religion. I felt it. It was strong. And I was, I didn't even wanna speak because it got that bad in there. And I thought, "Lord, what in the world's gonna happen?" Because I can't, I can't, this is all I got. This is who I am, you know, this is, this is, and I'm, I'm not gonna get up and conform to any, any places organization, especially after the, the, where I've got, took me to get to where I am right now, you know? My goodness, you know, it's been hell. You know? It's been hell within, you know, here, here, taking away everything within me, burning things out of me, there ain't nothing fun about this. There's nothing, you know, I, the reason you praise God is because you, you know His sovereignty. And you respect it, it's not, it's not out of, it's not out of goosebumps and good feelings and fo- foot tapping. It's because I got such reverence for the Lord. Because I know who He is, what He's done in me, and none of it was fun. To be stripped, you know, and I was thinking the other day to, to, "I must decrease and He must increase." We, we, you know, sometimes that thing, "Oh, glory, yes, I must decrease and He must..." No! You're losing yourself when you decrease. You're losing your knowledge of what you thought you knew about Him, and everything else, and who you are, and you, you know, decreasing's not too fun. But you must decrease, and He must increase, and the more you know who He is, the more you increase. And the more you decrease, at the same time. It's a two-way street, but whenever I was sitting there, they, they called me up to minister, and I started ministering, or, you know, preaching, I, I feel awkward talking like that. Because I don't claim myself to be a minister. I'm just put in this position. You know what I'm saying? I didn't call Bob and say, "Bob, can I come to Tennessee and minister at your church?" I didn't call nobody, I never, ever ask anybody if I could minister at their church. Never, not even in my home church. I, 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 when Clifton says, "Will you preach Wednesday night?", if I can find it within myself to say no, I will. You know? Promise you, and he knows it. He'll tell you, he ain't joking, he don't wanna preach. And, you know, it's not that I don't want to, it's just such a challenge. It's such a requirement. People don't understand what it requires, "Brother Darren, you know, with this church, it's a requirement of you." And, you know, anybody can get up and go through the motions of, "If you don't do this tonight, you'll go to hell," and, you know, and if you don't give your, you know, you can go through them motions all you want to. I'm talking about to really live and speak the Word of the Lord coming through you, and let it do its work within you, and then minister that word to somebody, is a heavy requirement. It's a load that's required that not everybody's cut out for. A heavy load. And people don't get that. They love to push you out of the way to get up and preach, people do. You know, they fight over this pulpit right here. You let them start walking in a different place, by golly, you can have this pulpit. I won't fight you for it. But I, but I began to minister, and I was so heavy laden up there, but the Word kept speaking to me, and Bob said, "Stand. Stand. You stand on your word." You just stand on it, you know, if you, if I, you gotta stand, man. And you can't conform to anything. And I stood, and I ministered, I, there was even times that you could just feel darts throwing, throwing at you. You feel these things when you minister. That's why people, when you're in a crowd like this right here, I can draw from y'all. I pull from y'all, and it just, it, it'll stir you up. You get in a place that's throwing darts at you, then you're weighted down. It's a different ballgame. But I heard the Word, and I'd even stop every once in a while, because it was so strong, you know, but I couldn't stop, I wanted to, but I couldn't, 'cause the Word kept telling me to stand. You stand. And we're gonna have to learn how to stand in, in them places, in them dark places. And that darkness is not anybody was in there mean. It's just because an unveiling hasn't happened yet. They weren't, they were great people. Great people. And I see darkness is not, we know that, you know, it was just a different place. Let me move on. I was so blessed last night. Is it, I, sometimes I feel like I'm just rambling. Like I say, this, you know, I'm just me. I was so blessed last night. I got back and told Rachel, I said, "Man," 'cause I, I'm not real talkative, you know, or, I mean, you know, I am sometimes, but I'm not, and it's just the Indian in me. No big deal. You know? Dennis will call me, we'll run around a couple words, and that's it. We're off the phone. That's all we'll get. That's a conversation, man. Full understood each other. But I was so blessed last night, and I told her, I said, "Man, my spirit was just leaping last night." Even though I may have sat there and did whatever you do, my spirit was just leaping. Because everything that God has revealed to me, whatever is lined, was lining up with all that, and everything is, everything He's saying, everything everybody said, and I'm talking, you know, from, I don't even remember. But you know, how, it's as far, as much as from whenever you said, thing, and like I said a while ago, things exist. And just because they ain't manifested yet, doesn't mean they don't exist. And that's what we have to understand. And God's called forth something, a people, a body that exists, even though you may not see a corporate expression of it yet in the earth, it's still there. And it has to manifest because creation has to comply with the Word of God. But I wanna share, and I wrote, I had some, about, a couple Bible verses I wrote down for last night. And it was neat, 'cause when I got back to the room, I, I said, "I rea- I wrote this down last night, you know, to always be ready, just in case, you know, they call on you." That's a good thing, always be ready. Always be ready to minister. Any, but anyways, I wrote this down, and I, I, I promised to you I had this wrote down last night, I didn't go home and write this down. I even had to show Rachel, that way I had a witness. But can we, uh, we don't have to turn there. We can if we want. Nobody's got a Bible anyway, so... I didn't even have one, I used, I used Rachel's. That's how revelated we are, it's all we did, it's all. But I wrote this down, and, and this is something that's just, can somebody go to this verse to help me out, Romans chapter eleven, verse thirty-six? But I wrote this down, and this is something that's been stuck with me for a while. That God's plan is in perfect order. As you said a while ago, that, you know, we, we worry about this virus, but the only reason it's here is 'cause something's gonna come out of it. God's plan is in perfect order. It has never been out of order. It can't be out of order. So from the beginning of creation, all the way down to where we at here today, God's plan has always been in perfect order. Does it seem like it is? Not to us, 'cause we don't know what a perfect order looks like. And we've got ten thousand emotions, and our ways of thinking how things should be, and "This ain't right, well, look at that," well, you ain't looking into it far enough. 'Cause we don't know God's plan. It's in perfect order. We're just out of alignment with that order. And what a, what a, what a, if we can really get that understanding, it would strengthen your spirit to a place that you, you can operate in, where, you, you, you know, we talk about these songs that was saying, "Man, everything was just lining up, bringing heaven and earth into one." You know, your soul man struggling, trying to understand the things of the Spirit. You know, and your spirit trying to teach the soul man when he can't understand anything, but he's being taught. And the more the wives learning how to submit to the husband, the more the perfect marriage is coming forth. We, we, we know that. The more the wife is submitting, the more the woman submitting to her hu- however you wanna call to it, heaven and earth coming together as one, a perfect, a new heaven and a new earth being created. You know, God, that's what God is doing, is creating the new heaven and the new earth in this day and time within us. You know, and maybe with, you know, who knows? I, I, I try to see everything within us, within, within me. But He's a Creator. Always been a Creator, and I heard Bob say that last night, that the Word, it's what He's doing, He's creating. But the building plans may not be our way we wanted to build them. What does that Bible verse say? Does anybody? Yes, sir.
For Him and through Him and to Him are all things to whom be glory forever. Amen.
For Him, to Him, and through Him be all things. All things. Now, what, what do, I'm all over here. Bear with me, now I'll remember why I wrote that Bible verse down. To Him and through Him be all things that ever existed. And then He's saying, "Through Him" is where I wanna share with you. Through Him. And I'm talking about the Christ. That's how existence comes into manifestation in the natural, is through the Christ. I heard Bob say last night that the Christ has always been there. He's always been there. He's been there since the beginning. If I can share with y'all tonight that nothing's ever came into existence besides through the Christ. Somebody's hearing it. Somebody can hear me right now. All this is new to me, I don't understand it. Y'all know me. I can't talk like this. If we can understand nothing's ever came into existence through the Christ, unless it came through the Christ. And I'm going all the way back to the beginning. In Genesis one. It's no different within me and you here today, today. Anything that's gonna come into existence is gonna come through the Christ's life within you. His life is coming through through you. And it's already there. It already exists within you. And God calls it that way. That it exists, even though it ain't been shown yet. And it exists in the drug addict. And it exists in the drug addict out there that's watching right now. And it exists in the church folks. That's why we can't look or be strifeful of anything like that, because the different understandings. You don't, you can't be strifeful for somebody that don't believe the same way we do, but will both say we love God, or one that's got a needle hanging out of their arm over here. God sees it both in them. That it's both, it's in them both. And it's gonna come forth. Because it has to. Because it's his word. But it has to come through the Christ to be manifested. Let me read this real quick to you. It says, I wrote this, it says, "God has the right to say things exist even though they aren't a present reality." Because it's his creation. In fact, it cannot be that it does not exist. It can't be, come on. We have to wrap our minds around this. See, we can't understand this kind of power. We don't understand it. We'll say we do, but we don't. We want to, I want to, but I don't. We, we know about it. But we don't, we, we don't understand that level, Bob. We, we don't understand that, that realm. We're too, we're too natural. Too soulish. But we're coming out of it. We have to. And it may not even, I had somebody, they say, "Well, what if somebody passed on that didn't get to experience that?" That ain't, that ain't my, you know, time does, God does not deal with time. Just because they passed out of this realm without experiencing them things, doesn't mean that on the other side or wherever that they won't experience it because they have to. They have to, because nothing that comes out of God can come back to him without being back who he was. Who it was, or it'd be imperfect. And, and, and we can't see God as that, so it has to come back. And Jesus was the pattern for that. And if you understand what a pattern is, this piece of paper is a piece of paper. If this was a piece of cloth that was a pattern for a quilt, the only reason it would make it a pattern was because something was gonna be made after that. That's what makes it a pattern. And there's a pattern, Jesus was the pattern for that creation to come back. That for, for, for to show how he, he was lowered himself into the material realm, overcame everything, was worthy, and resurrected to go back into that place of authority where he originated from. And we're no different. And it says, "Matter is just another form of existence, but existence doesn't hinge on material existence." And this word came to me last week and I ministered Wednesday night at Clifton's Church and I was sitting in that pulpit, and we've probably heard this before, but this pulpit was made of wood. It's made of wood. This pulpit originated in a tree somewhere a long time ago. Could be hundreds of years ago. And the thing of it is, is if somebody would have looked at that tree a hundred years ago, they would have never said this is gonna be a pulpit sitting in Bob Toronto's house. They didn't have that vision. And probably would have never even expected it. It was too far out of their understanding for them to, to get. And let's go even further with it. There was a time when there was a seed in the ground a thousand years ago, before that tree even manifested itself. And there was probably somebody standing somewhere that said, if anybody would have ever said, "There's gonna be a mighty tree grow right here, a thousand years, a hundred years later, that tree's gonna be turned into a pulpit and that pulpit's gonna be in Bob's house a thousand years from now." For one, it probably wouldn't have mattered to that person one bit. Well, what's that concern me? For another, they said, "Well, anyways, who cares? You're crazy." None of my concern. And if one that still couldn't wrap their mind around that type of transformation. Jesus had the same problem when he talked to them people, the disciples. They, they couldn't quite understand what he was talking about. But the truth now is within us and there's something that's speaking to you. To me, I, I learned not to drag everybody into my deal, so me, just say me, my experiences, that God is dropping us a vision, a revelation, or whatever within me, that's beginning to see things. And, and you know that it's real because, and I'm not looking for anybody else's, whatever, I'm, there's a witness within me, a double witness that the Lord's speaking to the Christ or the Christ is speaking to me and there's a, there's a witness taking place there and it becomes a reality. You have to have a witness. You know, and I'm not asking my wife to agree with me on everything. It's taking place within me. I'm not needing nobody's approval on what I'm saying's right. It's, you know, even, see, even, I'm not conforming to a church crowd to say, "I hope you believe me what I'm saying," and I'm not trying to convince you of anything. See, that's, that's different than what's going on right now. I'm just pouring out to you what's inside of me. And I believe that there, if it's whatever, then it's doing a work within you and it'll begin to do a work within you. And it'll, it'll do something to you. Because a real work being done in a person changes you, man. And I, I'm, I'm living proof of that. That's all I can say and it's just, it's, it's a battle. Because I try to hang on to them things like you were saying. We all do. What a battle. But, but on the other side of that, there's such a reality and a realness of knowing that everything's fine. That God's plan is in perfect control. A realness, and that gives me peace within. I remember a time when I had absolutely nothing. Homeless, nothing. But God gave me peace that I've never experienced, and it could only been God. And it wasn't like it lasted forever, but I had that experience. And it, nobody can take that from me. And I couldn't have been at a lower spot in my life for that to happen. So let me, let me get back to this, and I'll, I'll quit with this. God's plan is in perfect place here. If we can read one more Bible verse here, Romans chapter four. Are you right there, Paul? Romans chapter four and verse 17. We go back to the law. You know, everything has to be done in a lawful manner. If God does anything outside of the law, it's sin. So everything has to be done by the law. Go ahead. Which calleth those things to be, that be not as though they were. He called them things that we don't see right now, that they are. That seed, the father of all nations, that seed is within each and every one of them. And God calls that, even though we don't see it manifested in these people right now, in, in whatever, it's there and it's coming into existence. It has to. What a, what a comforting thing for me to know that no matter what stands in front of me, no matter whatever, whether I get to see it or not. Get yourself out of the way worrying about get to see it one day. And you be obedient and follow unto the Lord, knowing that it's coming into existence. Bob talked about the amen people. God's looking for an amen people, a yes people. They're saying, "I'm not worried about myself. I'm not worried about my own wants and needs. I'm worried about the Father's will, being done just as Jesus walked." He wasn't worried about what was happening to him. He wasn't worried about his own wants and needs. He was worried about the business of the Father. And I truly believe that this work that's being done within a people is lining them up to where they're saying, "I understand that." See, I, 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 I feel things that I can't express verbally. It's just, it's a reality. And, and, and it's, it's, I don't even want to make it sound like I'm this obedient person because I have so many faults. I'm not trying to claim that I'm perfect, but understand this, don't let that word that, that makes you think that you gotta be perfect hold you back from the process that brings you into completion. You know, we say, "Well, you, you got your faults and I got my faults." But we're being, let me, let me close with this. I, I want, this is so real to me. I want to share with y'all. You know, being image, in the image of God is, is not you walking around with a beard and a robe and a long hair, you know, all that and not even walking around with a, you know what I'm saying? You know, God was, to be in the image of God, it's like Darren's daughter there. If she is of his lineage, but she's not exactly like Darren, not look wise, nature wise. But if she ever comes to the point where she knows his ins and outs, his feelings, his everything about him, you know, and I'm, we, we don't. But Jesus was in tune with the Father because he was in his image. He was in tune with the word of the, of the Father because he was in his image. And if we can ever come to that place, and we can't do nothing on our own to, to get there, no man comes through the door except by the Father. So nobody's gonna come through here unless he brings you in there. By the Spirit working within you, coming alive within you, becoming a reality change within you, where it's no longer you, but it's him. That's the only way you can come through. We've been lowered into this realm out of a spiritual place. But we're going back into that mankind, creation. In the beginning was the word. Who's the word? The Christ. In the beginning was the word. The word was with God. And the word was God. We're talking about two different things here. In the beginning was the word. The word was with God and the word was God. Why was the word God? Because he was in the image of the Father. He was in the image of God. He was one with him. So anything God done when he said, "Let there be light," the Christ, the word, expressed it and manifested it and made creation begin. And I believe in this day and time, it's the same way. To be brought back into his image, we're hearing the Father speak. The head has done his job at the cross and has made the way now for all of creation, for the body to come together through his spirit, hearing the Father's word and being so obedient unto it, where we become one again in the image of the Father, where we can go back into our original identity. And begin to rule and reign out of love. I hope y'all, y'all hear what I'm saying. The word made flesh. I'm looking for the word to be made flesh. I'm like, like I said, we're not looking for an appearance out of the eastern skies or out of wherever. I'm looking for the appearance in Jamie sitting there. I'm looking for the appearance in each and every one of you, for the drug addicts and the alcoholics and the ones struggling right now. I'm looking for the appearance in you this morning. I'm looking for the appearance in creation. And I'm looking for that corporate body to come together. You want to see people get set free and you want to see the Christ come back, as they say? You watch this corporate body come together and be an expression in this earth. What a great time we're in. What a great time. Anything that's gonna be done in creation is gonna be done through him. I, I, I always said, "This is the greatest day we've ever seen." Today is the greatest day creation has ever seen. You say, "How can you say that, Sammy?" We're in the worst pandemic we've ever seen in our, in our area. Things are bad. No. Things are right in order. God's plan is in perfect order. We're out of line. We can't see it. But we're, we're, we're learning, Bob. I'm learning. We're getting there. Soberness. A soberness is what we're looking for. Come out of them old things and let's get sober and real about who he really is. I praise God this morning, man. Praise God for everything. I love y'all.
Good call. If you didn't hear, I was just telling Sammy, we could, we could hear his heart and that's where it's at. You know, that's what I felt the, the Lord telling me to tell you, is it's not gonna take a great oratory or a great sermon or to be a theologian for people to connect. Because that's what we need, connection. We need authenticity, that connection with the body. Hallelujah. You know, I was thinking about that, 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 that as we know, there's, there's the word that goes out there that talks about us being finished and being perfected, and this isn't what I'm gonna get on, but but we're just not there yet. If we can be real, we're just not there yet. If you need to prove that to yourself, go get a new puppy. You'll say things you shouldn't say, do things you shouldn't do. So I'm a little bit tired this morning. We have that new puppy. It's been keeping us up, getting up at 4:00 AM. So if I'm a little all over the place, forgive me. But, but in all seriousness, you know, there's just still things within us that, that need to be dealt with. I was thinking, and it's so funny that the Lord just confirms things. There's things rolling in me this morning and, you know, and I'm kinda like Sammy, always just come with something prepared, if the Lord gives it to me and if he wants me to share it. But I was thinking back of the church camp we had, and I can't remember if Darren was at this one in Dana or where we did the seeds about the garden. Was that the one y'all were at? Okay. And I was thinking about that, the parable of the sower, and it's such an elementary thing that we teach, you know, usually to kids in Sunday school or church camps or, or different things, but I feel like that's where we're at. I had to listen to Gary's sermon because I wasn't able to be here last night. But I really felt that word go forth. I truly feel like, I think that's the difference of where we're at. It's not just being, principles being taught or theories or great words or prophecies. There's something behind all of it. As you were saying, a sound that's behind it. It's not just, you know, God speaking, but it's God doing. Because, because speaking is one thing. God's been speaking to people for a long time and they still haven't gotten any of it. You know, you can hear somebody say something and not digest and go into you and do a thing. So God's been speaking since the foundation, since he spoke everything into existence. God's been speaking. But man's not been hearing. Not been listening, is what I should say. They've been hearing, but they're not listening. But I was seeing that in our hearts and our spirits, that word that went out last night. I really felt this morning, I felt that seriousness at, at the moment where Bob was talking about that, where we're hitting that wall, and what that was, in, in my mind, is there's these things that are still within us that we're not wanting to let go of. That we're still trying to safeguard and we're trying to protect. Because we're not, if, if you want to be honest, we're not there, as you had said, to where we truly trust God like we should. If we want to be candid about it. You know, we're a people that has a lot of revelation. We're a people that have a lot of understanding. We've connected. As was said, people have talked about God, been in the midst of prophets and never truly connected with God. We're that people that's connected with. We're that people that's connected with God. I believe that fully. I believe that God deals with us, He speaks to us, He walks with us, talks with us, is our Father, not just a, a figure out there that we worship. He's a real, living being Father, but, but we still have these trust issues within us, that inferiority complex, that whatever it is, to where these deep down things that we sure don't trust man with, we still aren't really comfortable with really trusting God with them. And so what I was seeing is that, that, that garden that's within us, that things are being pulled out of that in this hour, and God's just going through and ripping things out of that garden. Because we know the parable, and I'm not gonna get into all that, about rocky soil, and the thorns in the soil. God's preparing, and, and it was so funny that you ended on that seed, because that's what the Lord had in my heart, that every man, woman, and child that's came to this earth, has had a seed within them. That was birthed out of Christ, in that very beginning, when God spoke that into existence, there was a lineage birthed out of the spiritual realm, and it went into all man. And as we know, we minister, that we're the first fruits of the first fruits, that are part of that lineage, that are a spearhead, beginning to bring something forth out of the heavens into the earth. But all, how, as we know, all people are part of that lineage. All people are expressing God in the order that they're called to, in the rank they're called to, in the purpose. But we have a greater calling upon us, we have a greater seriousness upon us. And it's gonna take a willingness to allow God to, to rip things up out of us, that we can't do ourself. That's what I'm seeing, is that it, that this order is so different, not even just the kingdom message, because, and, and that's why I started with the thing about being perfect. How many of those people, and this is the nature of man, and that's what I'm seeing here, is that we're getting beyond that nature of man and what we're doing. It's still been embedded a little bit, I know we've been out of Pentecost, quote unquote, but there's still been a little bit of that in the midst of everything that we do at times. The mixture gets in there, and it tries to keep, make, man keeps trying to make his way into the pure move of God, but we're getting to a place where it's no longer gonna be able to happen, I believe. And by that, what I mean is that, that, that man comes up with almost tricks to dress things up, or, or to sell things, and that's what man does in a natural. There's, there's marketing people, there's, there's salespeople. They're gonna sell you anything, they'll sell ice to an Eskimo, is what they say. You know, that's, that's, that's what they do. Well, that's what we can do with doctrine. We can say, "Well, we believe God's gonna save all people." We can get ahold of some truths and ministers to those, but don't worry about all the problems, all the things going wrong, you're already perfected, forget about that. But that's what the people that come see us at the place we work at do in their life. They're in denial about it. They can't see it. They don't want to admit to it. And I see that we're that people that's beginning to come into this place, to where we say, "God, we're still broken, we still need you. We still need to come to a service like this and be lifted up. We still need people to pray for us. We still need people to minister to us." We don't have to come under condemnation and guilt whenever we go into that mindset, or whenever we have those thoughts. We're that people that understand that, but we're the people that's not gonna just act like it doesn't exist. Because that doesn't fix anything, it doesn't change anything. That's the first step to getting better, is coming out of that place of denial. Saying, "You know what? We're still not there." And that's okay. That's part of the plan and part of the order, is we're where we are today, and we're not where we're gonna be at tomorrow. So that's why I love coming into these meetings, because we begin to talk about what's gonna come, what's gonna be manifested, we remind ourselves of that. Because if we live in and day in, day out, and I was thinking about that pattern, Gary was talking about the day in and day out, we can forget that sometimes. We can know God, we can, we can hear the truth, but we can forget things pretty easily. We can forget the promises of God. We can forget that we're gonna be a people that walks into the fullness. That there's no more thorns and thistles and rocks in our soil, that we're no longer bitter about things that have happened, that we're no longer angry in those moments, that things no longer affect us the way they used to. And that's what I was seeing, is that there is a lot going on in the world right now. And I don't want to get into all that, everybody's fully aware of everything going on. And how many knows these aren't new problems that we have? This is the same stuff man's dealt with his entire existence. Racism, bigotry, hate. But, but what I'm seeing is it's getting scary in the world today, is that, that it's become this mentality, which is a religious belief and some other belief systems, to just act like things don't exist, to just be neutral, to just let everything be okay. And again, that's not a, I'm not gonna go down any train of thought on politics, what I'm here to say is that God's not neutral. God has judgment in Him. He's a judgment God that's gonna bring righteousness to a people, because there's an order, as you said, there's a law that God set forth, and He's not gonna allow man to miss the mark. And I thank God for that, because we would miss it. We do miss it, and we would keep missing it. But God keeps pushing us along, keeps dragging us back to where we need to go. He keeps, He keeps training us, day in and day out. But hopefully, we're that people that's not gonna have to go through the same training over and over and over. Because we're gonna be real enough to admit that we're not strong enough on our own. We're gonna be able to get up here and not have to put on a facade and act perfect, to act like, and that's what I'm seeing, is that God's tearing that thing down in a people, even in the world, that's what I, and I think I talked about that last time, I think social media has done that tremendously, where things have been exposed that you never thought would be exposed. People can't get away with anything now. And so that's where it looks so bad, but I don't think it's any different than it's ever been. If anything, you can look back at some civilizations, they were a lot more brutal than we are So that's what I was seeing, is that, that the world's looking for an answer right now. And they, they, they're trying to find it in all these ways. And, you know, and I'm not telling people to not have thoughts, opinions, support, whatever, hey, that's between you and God. That's, that's what you feel in your heart, your political beliefs, your beliefs about, whatever you do in your life, that's between you and God. But what I am here to say is that no matter what path we go down in the natural, it's not gonna resolve the issues we're dealing with as a people. Because these issues aren't bound to America, they're not bound to Europe, they're not bound to Australia. These are the natures of men's hearts, that have always been there, that have been deceitful, they've been lustful, they've been vengeful. Cain and Abel, the whole story about that, all the way back then, with stones, with rocks, with whatever they could. Hate has been in man's heart, anger, envy, jealousy. But we try to dress it up, and they try to make it look different, they try to act like it doesn't exist, and that it's all gone. And it's hidden beneath all of it. But that's what God's given us the eye to see, I believe, and I believe that's the difference of the people, is that we're seers in that sense. That it's not that we're hearing things and being deceived by them anymore. There's been a lot of people in the moves, and again, and I've only been in this thing so long, but you, you hear the stories where people get in the midst of a people that can say, "I'm kingdom," or "I'm this," and they could be caught up into a whole lot of things that aren't God. But see, there's a difference. And it's not about, again, declaring ourselves kingdom, or reconciliation people, or whatever you want to say, it's not about that. Because again, as soon as we put that stake down, like you said, that's God in a box right there. Reconciliation's a part of it. Kingdom's a part of it. But there, there's, there's so much complexity to God, that we could never minister all the facets, if you wanted to be really theological about who God is. There's too much there to, to, to get out in the English language, or whatever language you're gonna do it in. But God's preparing a people that, that are hearing His true voice. Because it's not just what they're hearing outside of them, it's resonating, and that's why I love that what happens this morning, is I was hearing what you were saying, as you were saying it, because I've been hearing it all morning, Sammy. And that's where I believe we're at, we begin to come into these services, and we're ministering together. It's not me coming to a service to wait to hear a little bit more revelation about the Bible, or about who God is. It's about pulling this out from us as a company, to manifest it into the earth realm. That's what I believe, is we come in with something in our spirit that we're carrying, and it's gonna take all of us, as Bob was saying, coming in one accord. And that's what I believe happened in that day of Pentecost. They came into one accord, and something got pulled out of them and manifested into the earth realm. And God's speaking the same thing so often to our hearts. It may be interpreted a little bit differently, we may have a little bit different pieces, it's like a puzzle, we may all have a little bitty piece. But when we're obedient, come into a service like this, and begin to wait our turn, and wait our order, and let things flow one after another, God does something. It's not pre-planned and pre, and I know, I don't know who all's watching on Facebook, and how long you followed, but I, I promise you, nothing here is pre-planned or well-thought-out, as you can probably tell sometimes. I'll leave that alone. But that's what we need. Because that's how God is, God's in season and in time. He's organic, if you will. He's right there in the moment, not watered down, not dressed up to try to look pretty. And people, again, our minds get so caught up in all that. "Well, I'm gonna get out of the old, so I'm gonna just, you know, no longer have to dress decent, or I'm gonna..." You know, I, just all the stuff that's happening in the religious minds of people, they're gonna do this and do that, and it's gonna make them more holier, because they came out of that, and now they can do whatever they want. And that's, that's my whole point, is that's not who God is. God's about hearing His voice in a training, and an obedience sits there, and a willingness for our hearts to be dealt with. See, that's scary, that's what man doesn't want. Man doesn't want to be dealt with. He's unruly, he's rebellious. And that's what I see, is that man's still looking to men for answers. And I believe God's ordained that, God's allowed that. He allowed Saul to come, whenever they wanted a king. It was all for a purpose and a reason. You know, I was thinking about that, that, the, the thought crossed my mind, as you were talking about that virus, you know, out there at work, we've been fortunate. We have had, we, you know, we had 122 admissions last month, we've only had one case where it was a staff member that had nothing to do with the facility, and I really believe God protects that place out there. But I was thinking about that this morning, how much it would be a paradigm shift for people to be led by God in what we do. Because how many, I, I mean, I just believe this, I don't believe that the world's gonna be changed by just having meetings. I believe this is for the body, for the gathering of those, as we said, the, the first fruits of the first fruit, to come together, like I said, to be reminded, to be built up, to be, have things imparted to us, to go out and minister to others in other places. And that's what I was hearing that word last night, it resonated with me so strong, when you gave that word to Sabrina and Russ, there's something gonna happen down there. I don't know what that is, and I know our minds can think, well, it's gonna have to be all these people and all these things, I don't know what it is, but there's gonna be something done. Because God doesn't prepare us and put us through all the hell for no reason. Sammy, God doesn't do that for no reason. It's for a purpose. But I was thinking, I had that thought, I was like, you know, just in my workplace, what if everybody came together in the morning and began to ask God to come into that place? Prayed over that thing? And thankfully, God's covered it without that, I believe that. But I'm like, that's the paradigm shift, that, that I know that we operate out of that way, but begin to think of a world that begins to operate like that. Again, not just praying because we're supposed to pray, or reading the Bible because we're supposed to read, people have done that. But truly having convocation with God before we make decisions. Truly having the, the Fathers, because I believe that, and I don't know what this looks like, but I believe there's gonna be some of that. I don't think it's just gonna be this kingdom manifest, and we're sitting around on the couch, just looking at each other and praying all day long. We gotta change the world by having positions, and, and keeping in mind, like you said, that 24/7 knowledge of who we are as ministry, and everybody has a ministry, while we're in these other places God has us, to affect the people that He's gonna bring before us. I believe that. I believe that God's gonna have us involved in things, and maybe He does call some of us fully out of those things, that's God's business. Again, if God has you where you're at, that's between you and God, I'm not here to tell you to drop everything you're doing. If God lays that in your heart, I, I would listen, but that's a, that's a thing that's between you and God. But I'm seeing that God's beginning to give us, and that's, that's where I was trying to get to here, with that seed, as He begins to deal with our heart, it's beginning to birth something and produce something, that inner man, again, is beginning to create things. And that's what I'm seeing in these services, there's beginning to be some things created. It's not just things explained, or talked about, or drawing conclusions, which are great, and I'm still for all that, but it's things being created that, that change things, that give life to things that are dead, that bring that dead back to life. And that's what I was hearing, as Bob said that, that resonated with me as well, that, that it's not just us looking to raise natural dead people. I mean, so be it if God, God does those things, but, but it's us raising people up out of a grave they're in. They're just doing what men do. And that's what I'm seeing, is all these organizations and systems, and, and I'm, I'm in a class right now, and I'm almost done with school, thank the Lord for that. So that's what I had to do last night, and so I'm in a behavior organizations class, it's all about organizations and behavior. And you know, they have to teach men, and I say men in a general sense, mankind, ethical principles for a reason. How many knows God, whenever we're operating in a spirit, it's not gonna have to teach us ethical principles? Or about morality? Or about all these things that we have to train man, just to keep him caged up and locked up, to where he doesn't get unruly, and out of control? See, that's the difference, is we have to train our natural man just to act right. And we still can't get it right. We try to eat right, we try to dress right, we try to speak right? Untrainable. Bunch of unruly recruits that are never gonna get it. That's how our natural man is, but that's what the religious mind does to us, is it keeps trying to train that old man to be better. It can't train, train this out of us, it can't doctrine in this out of us, it can't theologically get it out of us. Our mind can't, all of a sudden, comprehend God well enough to change. That's not how this thing works. It's a seed that's growing, and each and every one of us being nurtured and fed and watered, and given sunlight through services like this, so that we begin to produce something. Hallelujah. So I, I just see it so much more and more, and, and again, in the systems of the world, because I believe God deals with the world. I truly believe His hands in it. I believe He deals with it differently than He's dealing with us. I believe that there's a different calling on those that truly are walking and seeking the Lord face to face. As that song said, "When we see His face, there's a difference there, than when we just hear His name, or just hear about Him." There's a, there's a reverence to that, and there's a holiness about that, but there's a different level, when you're talking about trying to see face, God face to face. That, that old man's gonna die, has to die, he can't survive in that, can't live in that. But I, I was thinking of that, and I want to kind of close with, with this and a couple thoughts. And I think I shared this, that, that with this exposure in the world, there have been more CEOs have to step down, there's been more people in positions of power have to step down, and even at the highest office in our land, there's been change had to have happened. And the world is at a place where it doesn't know really what to do. If you want to be honest, the left, the right, the middle, the up, the down, nobody knows what to do. Because the old stuff isn't working anymore. They can't keep things hidden. Things can't not be exposed. And that's the big debate right now, is, well, nobody's really that great at the end of the day. Nobody acts right, nobody speaks well. So who are we gonna back, who are we gonna support? How about God? And not just a church order that represents God, but that's where I see, is it's a prime opportunity for a company of sons to really raise up in this hour, with something real, something people can grab ahold of. Because laws, and governments, and orders, and trainings, it only keeps the man contained for so long. You would think, and, and I, I think Bob and I have talked about this a lot, you, you watch like a football game, and these people have been playing their whole life, professionals at what they do, and they'll still jump off sides. They've known that, I'm sure in the military, Russ, you've seen people trained and trained and trained, and still make the mistakes you talk about not doing. And these are grown men, 30 years old, probably been playing football since they were six or seven, one simple thing, watch the football, and don't move till the football moves. That's how ignorant man is. Still can't get it right with something that simple. But we can lose focus, as was said. I, I, I did receive that word, the juggling word, I was sitting there thinking, as you were giving that to Dennis, I was thinking, gosh, that sounds like me. Then you said, "That's for everyone," I believe that. Because life is like that. Life comes a million miles per hour, and it doesn't slow down. And again, that's the thing, is we can't just check out. That's what the scary thing that I see going on right now, that's, and that's not just in a political arena, or that movement, that's a, that's, that's a whole religious movement, if you will, of just detach, just check out, act like things don't exist, become neutral, just become numb. That's what drugs are for, to numb out. That's what sexual addiction's for, is to numb out, that's what food's for, to numb out. That's what we're beginning to teach a whole company of people, is just numb out. Everything's okay, except anything and everything. And I'm not here to talk about judging people, and being bigots, or being, all the stuff that gets into all that, that's not, that's not my purpose in saying that. My purpose is saying that there's a law within us, a seed within us, that has substance to us, that if we begin to minister that, man's gonna come into line with that thing. Because they have to, I love that, what you said, Sammy, I don't know if I'm saying it back right, but it has to. There's no, there's no ifs ands or buts about it. As God's plan unfolds within the midst of us, things have to fall in line with that, in our life, and with those lives around us. So if we're really worried about things, begin to seek God. Begin to try to trust God. I, I will close with this, I was, I was talking to a therapist that does a, a therapy technique called EMDR, which addresses and treats trauma that was formed for the military, and, and they do a lot of this, and in therapy, of course, it's pretty neutral a lot of times, it's, you know, there are... You know, there are spiritual counselors, things like that. But a lot of times, it's about meeting with a person where they're at and staying pretty neutral. Because at the end of the day, it's about helping somebody get better, no matter their beliefs, what they do, just anything, just trying to help a person really stay alive in some cases. And so what they do is they try to get them to go to a safe place, you know, is where they start this at, well, you know, find a safe person, find a safe place. And they do that to resource someone, so that whenever they start working with them clinically, and get them into a place where they're really re-experiencing the trauma, or the anxiety, or the fear, or the panic, they can remind them to go back to that safe place. You know, and it may be a beach, or it may be the person's parent growing up, or whatever it may be. And that's the kind of psychological tactic they have, to not leave somebody in distress once that session's over. Because you don't want to cause damage. Well, the therapist was talking to me about this, and he said, "You know what? I quit doing that." Because he said, "You can't put all your hope in man. You can't put all your hope in a place." He said, "I get people centered into God when we get in that moment." "I get people to connect with God in that moment." Because he said, "That's what it is, whenever we're doing those," and I've seen that, and been through that, I've done my own work. When we're in that place of re-experiencing that moment where we were abused, wounded, hurt, traumatized, we go back to a place that's different than 29-year-old Zach, or the age we are today. We go to a different place. It's a very primitive reactionary emotional place that bases itself just around trust and mistrust a lot of times. It's about safety. And that's what I was seeing, is that, that's what that therapist said, is he said, "To begin to heal people, you've got to begin to get that part of them to really connect with God, and to trust God in those moments. Get them back where they're doing that work, where they're going back through that, and instead of trying to get them to connect to some happy place, or some happy person, get them to connect in God, and bring God into that moment in their life." Well, and that's what I'm seeing, that we have to begin to do as a people, is bring God into those deep, dark places. Hopefully, we're past that judgmental mindset of realizing, if I have that thought I shouldn't have, I don't have to condemn myself, beat myself down, but I want to invite God into that a little bit. You might be interested in what you find there. That's what I believe. All those thoughts, those behaviors came for a reason. They were about survival, they were about protection. A lot of them are very adolescent. That's what we know in the psychology world, is a lot of what happens really developed in us very early on. And we don't go back there to ever mature it, if you will. We stay very adolescent in certain areas of our lives, especially if you throw drugs and alcohol and different things in the mix. That's why they say somebody that starts drinking at 12 really stays 12 emotionally in a lot of ways. They don't mature. They can't handle life on life's terms. Well, there's parts of us, you know, and I won't, I was going to try to end, I'll hopefully end with this, I'll just let it be what it is. And Bob's book, he talks about that, all the atoms that make us up. A man's not just one thing. Just as the body's not a one company thing, it's a many-membered organism. Even us psychologically have all these parts of us. And I think I'd mentioned that. But that's what I'm seeing, is that there's parts of us that have played roles, that are going to begin to trust God, and no longer have a role in our life. That protector. That's what I was seeing that last time I was up here, is that part of us, that as you were saying, that religious movement where you have to be a little bit on guard, you have to be a little bit cautious, that part of us is going to be able to take a back seat now, and get up and minister what God has for us to minister. And not worry about the ramifications of it. It's not to get up and hurt people, or abuse people, but it's going to be to give truth, and people have to do with that what they will. That's between them and God. If God gives you a word, we've got to speak it. Because holding back, that's what I'm seeing, is holding back and not telling it like it is, is hurting people. You know, and ruling and reigning with that rod of iron is not about dominion over people in the sense of man, how he's always wanted dominion over things. That comes with a responsibility, to be a part of the man-child company. With a sovereignty, that God's overseeing the sovereignty of this move, to touch things when they need to be touched, and deal with things when they need to be dealt with. But it starts with us, with our inner man. That's where I'm seeing, the dealings of God truly are an inner work. I believe they will take manifest in outer, and I know we have some needs here, and I just pray God, just a general prayer, to touch those, touch the bodies in the room that need touched. God gives us the strength when we need it in our bodies and in our minds. But how many knows that what God's doing's not just in our bodies and minds? It's so much deeper. And that's what I'm seeing, is that there is an authenticity coming to a people that's going to draw people in. That's why, you know, that's why the church is losing people. It's not because God's getting smaller, or God's losing the battle against the devil, or any of the stuff that they try to keep, telling people to keep them in the church building. The devil's not on the loose, running around, getting a hold of everybody. He's always been in his own place that God allows him to be in, and only used when God allows it to be. It's that man are becoming a little bit wiser in the sense of, they realize they've been fooled. Things don't add up anymore. And they're getting tired of trying to believe in anything. And that's what I'm getting worried about a people. Again, that's not a political thing, that's a nature where people are just getting fed up and not believing or standing for anything anymore. They're just becoming neutral, and becoming numb, and just trying to get through life, just to get through life. That can't be us. With juggling all those balls, that can't be us. Because I do believe God's going to give us some things to juggle at times, but hopefully it's the balls He's putting in our hands to juggle. God's not just going to, again, have us sitting around doing nothing. Things aren't going to change like that. Hallelujah. So I praise the Lord, and I'm excited, I really am, for just where we're at. It's different. As you said, it's just different. It's not the same, nor should it be. What we've done hasn't worked so far. That would be insanity if we kept doing the same thing over and over. Saying the same things over and over. So I just praise God, thank Him this morning, and I hope everybody enjoys what the Lord's doing in us.
Aaron, are you going to be here for the whole weekend? When are you guys going to be back?
I was just checking with the boss. We never know what we're going to do on Sunday morning, but we'll definitely be here tonight.
I do want you to minister at the time. I feel like we've really heard from the Lord this morning.
Great to have God speak to us in such a way. Hard truth. And that's what we need right now. We need the Word spoken to us without reservation, and for the Word to be able to be effective in our lives. I laughed when Zach said, "Believe me, there is no planning," because I think that's what's different amongst the House of the Lord and other groups, is that we have been trained of the Lord a long time ago, that we cannot afford to try to control God. So it's like a death every time someone gets up to say something or do something. There's a death process there, because we have to be totally surrendered and yielded to whatever God wants to say or do. And that's just our upbringing in the Lord. It's not something we do consciously, it's just that way. And that's why we feel such a kinsmanship to those that flow in with us in our meetings, is because I know that's what we all want, really. Is to have that surrender in us, to do whatever the Lord wants to do. So we're not trying to impress anybody, or puff anybody's flesh up, or do any of those religious things. We just really want to be what God wants us to be in the midst of us. So I appreciate everybody flowing together, because it takes God to do that. It really does. And I think the ministry that do come in to minister, I believe that there's a great surrender in their hearts to do that. I'd rather have Jesus than sell the road door. I'd rather be His than have riches untold. I'd rather have Jesus than houses or lands. I'd rather be led by His nail-hard hands. Or than to be the king of a vast domain, or be held in sins' red sweat. I'd rather have Jesus than anything. This old world can afford neither day. Sing it with me. I'd rather have Jesus than sell the road door. I'd rather be His than have riches untold. I'd rather have Jesus than houses or lands. I'd rather be led by His nail-hard hands. Than to be the king of a vast domain, or be held in sins' red sweat. I'd rather have Jesus than anything. This old world can afford neither day. And that's the truth. Hallelujah. Oh, we love you, Jesus. Oh, how we love you, Lord. You're all we want, Lord. It's only you. You're enough, Lord. You're enough to be the king of our heart, the Lord of our life. And all we want to do is please you, Lord. Thank you for it, Jesus. Hallelujah. Amen. If you have an offering to help with expenses of the meetings, leave it in this little basket up here on this table. We'd appreciate it. We want to try to help those that have come in, pay for motel rooms and things like that. So there's some expense. And if anyone listening on Facebook, or any other means of this meeting, and you want to help with the expenses of it, you can send in a check earmarked, Fourth of July meeting, and send it to P.O. Box 0519 Dixon, D-I-C-K-S-O-N, Tennessee, 37056. Or go to the House of the Lord on PayPal, and just let the Lord lead you and guide you on that. All right, tonight at 7:00 Central Time, we'll be here again. Love y'all.